August 31st, and I want to call order this regular business meeting of the Ferndale School Board. Before I get started, I want to remind everyone that masks are required at our school board meetings and at all indoor activities within our school system. Thank you for complying with this requirement. So first, I'd like everyone to rise and join me in deciding pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic where this stands, one nation, united in this world, with liberty and justice for all.
The next item, 6.01, is the adoption of the agenda. And I just wanted to say, Jesse Girdal performed this right meeting, and she was unable to be here. And so we had an item, 6.01, that was her presentation of information from a conference that she attended. So we're going to move that to probably the next meeting with Jesse. Any other changes to the agenda? Or a motion?
I will make a motion to adopt the agenda with the exception of 6.01, which will be moved to a later agenda.
All right, it's been moved to adopt the agenda. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Want to oppose? Motion carries. The next two items on the agenda are the consent agendas. The superintendent's consent agenda consists of items delegated to the superintendent for actions that requiring the board's final approval. The board's consent agenda consists of items for the board to address. The board has had an opportunity to review all of these items prior to this meeting, and is therefore able to expedite our work by taking them as one action rather than one at a time. These same items are available on board docs. So at this time, I will entertain a motion to approve both consent agendas.
I'm moved to accept both consent agendas as presented in late part of the minutes.
All right, it's been moved to approve the consent agendas that's attached here too and made a part of the minutes. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All right. All right, the next item on the agenda is public comment. As is our practice, I will now recognize audience members who wish to share comments with the board. However, before I do, I want to make a comment myself. Because we received several questions in advance of tonight's meeting about the format of public comment at our meetings, I ask our assistant, Jackson Hogan, to post the following statement on both board docs and the district placement page last Friday. And this is it, I'm quoting, "In accordance with the board's policy, the members of the public who pre-registered and who are residents of the school district will be called upon first. Each commenter will be allowed three minutes to express his or her thoughts. The board president will limit the total amount of time for public comment to 45 minutes to allow us sufficient time for us to conduct the rest of our business." I want to reiterate that it's essential for everyone who wishes to be inside the building when they address the board or choose to attend the meeting as an observer, they have to wear a mask that covers both their mouth and their nose at all times. Since we were notified in advance that some commenters may not be willing to put on a mask, we made arrangements for them to deliver their comments from an outdoor space on campus and for us to hear and see them on the screen via Zoom. Let me say once again, each speaker is limited to three minutes. The board will entertain a total of 45 minutes. If at the end of the time, there are still stakeholders wishing to speak, the board will accept their comments in writing, or we'll invite them to attend and speak at a future meeting, or make arrangements to contact them via telephone following the meeting. Kelly Lervie, Kelly, will you be our timekeeper?
I will be your time.
Thank you. All right. So we have three people who sign up in advance, so per what was posted, they go first. So the first up is Tiffany Leonard.
Tiffany is outside.
We'll check.
Might be coming up.
Am I good?
Yeah.
Step up here if you don't mind. Okay. There we go. Hi, I would like to open with a quote from David Hume. "There is no such thing as freedom of choice unless there is freedom to refuse. Just think about that for one second. My name is Tiffany Lindhart, and I have two daughters in the Ferndale School District. My oldest is a freshman this year, and my youngest, a first grader at Custer Elementary. I come to you today to express my concerns for the students and staff within this district. Our governor has issued a couple of mandates that are genuinely concerning to me and a lot of others, obviously. He has said that he will take funding from our schools if they don't enforce these mandates. Teachers are going to lose their jobs. Our students are going to lose out on their education. Do you want our teachers to leave? Because I know I don't. I checked the Washington State Department of Health website on Thursday last week, and it clearly stated that a whopping 0.17% of COVID-related deaths in Washington State were children ages zero to 19. While they make up 18.3% of reported cases in the state, I would say that the risk to them is pretty low. Do we really need to restrict their airflow and torture them with masks? Have you ever heard of the Nuremberg Code of 1947? Did you know that the government cannot force you to take part in a medical experiment without your informed consent? As an American, you have the right to refuse. Masks have been proven ineffective against the viruses. The EPA actually conducted a study on the effectiveness of each of these different types of masks. The results determined that cotton face masks are 49% effective, and the disposable surgical ones that you guys hand out to our students every day are only 38.5% effective. Therefore, forcing our children to wear masks in a classroom setting is simply an experiment, and it's one that will cripple an entire generation of children. There are so many emotions that we have all learned to recognize through one language. That language is facial expression. Without the ability to see expressions on someone's face, we can never really understand each other. This in turn creates social anxiety as the students are unsure of how to communicate with one another. Nonverbal communication is just as important as verbal communication, and when you take one away, you cripple their ability to communicate at all. What is your plan for the students who have medical conditions that make mask-wearing difficult? They have the same rights as the other students who can wear masks, and yet they're being completely segregated from their classmates, further hindering their social abilities. Younger children who are new to school or just new to the school that they're coming to might be afraid of seeing people that they don't know. And by forcing them to wear masks, all you're doing is increasing that fear in them and solidifying it in their fragile, young minds. Article 14, Section 1 of the U.S. Constitution reads, "All persons born or naturalized in the United States and subject to the jurisdiction thereof are citizens of the United States and of the state wherein they reside. No state shall make or enforce any law which shall abridge the privileges or immunities of citizens of the..."
Lindhart, your time is up, please. Next speaker is Clay Owen. Clay Owen?
Kelly, maybe you should go outside so they can know what the timing is while the speaker's outside.
Thank you. The next speaker is Clay Owen.
Ask him to unmute. He has unmuted.
You're good now.
So I wanted to speak to you guys today about what I observe with my own eyes and a little bit of common sense. The problem here is that there's science to back up both sides of this argument that we're having. But I was an essential worker, and I traveled to and from Seattle six days a week. Six days a week while I was building Seattle Children's Hospital. And me and all the guys that I work with on a daily basis, commuting to and from the most metropolitan areas that this entire state has to offer. We're building Seattle Children's Hospital. Not one time did we ever share the streets of downtown Seattle. When they were empty, you can see 10 blocks in either direction. Not one time did we ever share it with multiple ambulances. Not one time. Now, we thought that that was kind of strange, but then we look around, and as we're traveling and commuting through all of these areas, we see thriving homeless camps. Thriving homeless camps in the middle of the most deadly pandemic that's supposed to be ever hit this world. And the homeless people are not dropping like flies. And then, when you're working down there for a year, not one time did we ever see a line of ambulances outside of Seattle Children's Hospital. Not one time did we see a line of cars, guys working inside and outside on all of these hospitals downtown Seattle. And we never not once saw anything except for operation as normal, never shared the streets with multiple ambulances. So we have to use common sense. We all went to the fair, I'm sure the Northwest Washington Fair, we all went there. We saw thousands of kids for 12 days there. We all shared the same rides, we all shared the same squirt guns, we all shared... There was a self-serve slurpee machine, okay? Hundreds of people, it's not thousands of people touching it. Nothing was sanitized all day long for six hours a day. And now, how long's it been? It's been over two weeks. We would have seen it in the news that this was some sort of big super-spreader event. So all we got to do is open up our eyes and see what's going on around us to know what is right and wrong. And masking these kids is not right. And I asked this school board to step up and step out, step out of the way of Jay Inslee's executive order, and step up and take a vote to unmask these kids, because you have the right to do it. The school boards and the teachers' unions, they go around the law all the time when it comes to voting to strike. But when it comes to taking the masks off these kids, you guys want to hide behind Jay Inslee and his unconstitutional order? Well, us parents, we're tired of it. And if you guys don't start doing your jobs, then you're going to find your little comfy seats back there, not any longer, because we will vote you guys out.
All right, Pat Rogan?
Well, I'm here, but I wasn't going to speak.
Oh, oh, I'm sorry.
I signed up because I had to sign up to come here, but I wasn't making any comments. I wrote that in there.
Oh, okay. Thanks. David Spring?
My name is David Spring. I am a parent and retired teacher. I have given you a written letter opposing masks. I would like to speak to you briefly about the emergency orders versus human rights. Some have argued that school boards cannot defy the emergency order of the governor. They claim that since some court has ruled the governor's emergency orders to be legal, the school board's hands are tied no matter how much harm is inflicted on their children. However, school board directors have taken notes of whole the U.S. and Washington State Constitution. Just because our governor and some judge violate their oath of office does not mean school board directors can merely look the other way. In the past, U.S. judges once supported Jim Crow laws in the segregation of public schools. In 1933, Hitler declared an emergency order in order to protect the German people. Many judges ruled that Hitler's emergency orders were legal, even though his orders violated the inalienable rights of many people. This led eventually to World War II and the Nuremberg Code, which clearly states that people have an inalienable right to medical freedom. Because masks and vaccines are medical devices, people have an inalienable right to refuse these devices. Masked and vaccine mandates also violate the U.S. and Washington State constitutions. The Nuremberg Code, U.S. Constitution, Washington State Constitution cannot be suspended by any emergency. In particular, an emergency order violates Article 2, Section 28 of the Washington State Constitution, which states that the legislature shall pass no law regarding the management of our public schools. This provision was put into our state constitution in 1889 because the drafters did not trust the legislature or the governor. They wanted to limit the government and retain local control of public schools. Despite the obvious meaning of Article 2, Section 28, the legislature has passed more than 100 laws regarding the management of public schools. Every one of these laws is in violation of our state constitution. I urge you to stand up for your oath of office, stand up for the state constitution, and return, as the drafters or our constitution wanted, to local control of the public schools. You have the right, you have the duty. Thank you for considering my comments and reading my letter. Feel free to email me if you have any questions. Thank you.
All right, Elizabeth Perry?
Hi, my name's Elizabeth Perry, and I'm a mother of three homeschooled children. I'm a big advocate for homeschooling, and I'm fully trying to get people on board. They are all school-age children in the Ferndale School District, but we do go to blame for home connections, which we are thinking about quitting. So our tax dollars are going to go right out the door. But I wanted to take a few words from your website that said the first lines of your duties here is advocating on behalf of the students, the schools, and representing the community. You are in charge of the three Rs. And there's a lot of stuff that's happening in these schools that parents are saying they're fed up. They don't want you teaching their kids anymore. You are not health advisors, you are not the Health Board, you're not the CDC. And you know what? You are not Jay Inslee's or Reitl's servants to kowtow down to his mandates. I will not stand by while you muzzle our children with these dirty masks for hours. My children's friends do not like it. Not everybody can homeschool their children. And I will not stand by and watch 30% of our school staff be fired over something Jay Inslee has put down, just like he said. He has no right to do that. The vaccine is proving ineffective. It's 50% at this point. You can still get it, you can still transmit it. So what is the point? But I digress. I'm going to speak to all the parents out there right now. Do you know with these mandates that you are not allowed to volunteer in the classroom at field trips? On field days? If you don't have the jab? You're not allowed to be a room mom. That should piss you off, because you know what? I guarantee you they're going to move the goalposts just like they have for the last 18 months. Don't get it. You know what the honest truth is? Is that they do not want you. You guys don't want us in the classroom. You don't want us to see how you're indoctrinating our children with this BS behavior and education. You don't want us there. You would rather have the people that don't question anything in that room planning your parties and doing your school trips. That's what you want. And don't you dare to lie to me about it. So Ferndale, you're afraid that James is going to take your money away if you buck up to these mandates and these orders, the masks and the vaccines. That's what I'm talking about right now. You're afraid of that. Senator Doug Erickson says, "That's not constitutional, he can't do that." But Ferndale, this guy over here told me something last night. He said, "You guys have a levy up in February. You guys need our votes and our money in February, and you guys have a really hard time with bonds and levies." So you know what? I'm going to make it my job to make it every parent votes no on these levies if you don't unmask our kids and make sure our teachers keep their jobs without the jab. Thank you.
Casey Sobjak?
I'm not going to waste a whole bunch of time, because really, I'm cold out here. This is ridiculous.
We can hear you, sorry.
I will...
Casey, you're very quiet.
Can you hear me?
It's very quiet, it's a little difficult to hear you.
Tech is walking out right now.
Oh, the tech is walking out. We should hopefully fix the... Sorry about the delay.
Do you want me to wait until...
Yeah, just a second.
Just a second.
Can you hear us?
It's still a little quiet.
Can you turn up the speakers?
Our speaker in here, I mean, we can hear him enough, it seems like.
These speakers don't have adjustable volume. Let me see, like... This is at 100.
Come on out. Let your room out here. Yeah, re-air, right?
Can you hear us?
That's a lot better. I mean, you might just need to speak up.
Get close to the mic.
If you get closer to the mic, I know...
Okay, now, can you hear me?
What we have to do.
Perfect. Anyway. This situation out here is ridiculous, so I hope the next school board meeting, we can have something else, maybe some big roll-up doors somewhere. I don't know, but there's people out here that do have medical conditions and cannot wear a mask, and they are not allowed inside the warm building. That's just ridiculous. I do have folders for each of the board members, and what this has in it is there is a study done on some of the cloth masks versus the surgical mask. But more importantly, what's in here is we do have some testimonies by parents, almost 40 testimonies by parents in this county, even parents that are behind me today, myself included. What is in those testimonies is how the mask affected our children and what we dealt with every single day when we picked our child up, and they were in tears because they had to wear a dirty sock over their face, suffocating them all day long. And I really do hope that you read these, that you don't actually just take and skim through it, because this is real information from parents. And it is sick, disgusting, and is 100% child abuse to have our children in these masks. And we all know what's coming next. The mask is the only, the beginning. What's coming next is you want to stick our kids, you want to vaccinate them. And all you board members, if that is what you believe, you need to let us know, you need to let all the people know out here and there that that's what you believe. If that is. If it isn't, stand with us, and we will stand with you and fight with you. But if you just continue to just take these orders from Inslee and the superintendents and not do anything, it's just, it's just not right, and you will be affected. The school districts will be affected, because parents like myself are going to pull our child from the school district. So you are going to feel that. That is all I have, and I'm just hoping that somebody can come out and I can give them these folders so they can be delivered. Thank you.
Andrew Gustafson? You guys turning the camera over here, or is it just talking blindly into the air?
You are on camera.
Oh, wonderful. My name's Andrew Gustafson. Good to see you all. Hey, quick announcement, I saw a couple of, just saw on the news, the Kiddatass School District has just announced they are not policing masks, that they acknowledged it's a mandate from the government. The super said that he's not, it's not his job to police the kids wearing the mask. So the Kiddatass, you already have press, and you've got another district, you can stand up today. A question for you, 2009, 2010, H1N1. Did you guys require masks in 2009, 2010? Why not? Because that year, 17 and under deaths, pediatric deaths, there was 12,082. Did you guys require masks in 2012 and 13? Well, why not? Because that year, regular flu killed 1,161 pediatric deaths under the age of 17 in the United States. Did you require masks in 19 or 20? No? No, you didn't? Well, that year, the regular flu killed 434 people, kids, in the normal 12-month period. Would you like to know how many deaths, pediatric deaths, have been associated, just associated with COVID? 361 in the last 20 months. You didn't require masks over the last 10 years when the flu has killed more people, more kids, than this last 20-month period, but for some reason, you're just bending over and requiring the mask now when you never did before. Why the double standard? Why the double standard? Why not do it before? Are you going to do it when COVID's all gone and the flu season hits again? Are you going to require a mask again 24/7 through 65 years, days of the year in the school district? Are you going to do it then? If not, you're hypocrites. 80 million bucks, I just saw your budget from, they just approved. That's impressive. Guys, what was it, like 50 million bucks, like eight years ago? And what's it going to be in 2026? 100 million bucks? That's twice as much as the city of Ferndale, the whole budget right there. $80 million, that's forecasted 4,500 full-time students. That's like $17,500 per student. That's more than you pay at a private school in the area. But as you guys already noted in your board docs and the July fund balance, as listed in the OE5 financial planning document, you guys aren't anywhere near 4,500 students. Your own report shows you're about 4,100 students for the whole last year. And this OE5 report says you're missing 300 kids, and it put a $3 million hole in your budget last year. You're using ESR funds on that $80 million budget to balance it with your reserve funds, and you're doing it, saying that you're going to have 4,500 kids going into this next school year. What happens when only 4,100 show up again, and you got another hole? What happens if more kids don't show up? What if you have only 3,500 kids that show up? Last year, parents pulled their kids off because of COVID and remote learning. This year, in addition to COVID, parents are facing the prospect of putting their kids to the meat grinder of hyper-sexualized CSC curriculum, the racist CRT curriculum, the dehumanizing mask mitigation, and the bodily autonomically violating Vax mandates. How many people do you think are going to bring their kids back for that? I'm here to remind the board that you promised that the bond would be affordable by keeping the levy capped at $1.50. And I'm going to tell you what, I'm going to back at every single meeting to hold you to your promise, that is, that the promise does not have an expiration date. And you can hear already the disenfranchisement. People are going to be unhappy about a lot of other issues besides just the taxes.
Thanks.
All right, Susan Constantine? Susan Constantine?
Yes. Hello? Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Hi, my name is Susan, and I don't have a lot to say. I didn't expect to be here tonight, kind of at the last minute here, but I do want to, since I'm here, I do want to say a few things. Number one, I have a proposition to make to the district. I believe in your slogan, you are proud of the phrase "students first." I propose we change that to "politics first and students last." Let's be truthful here, because that's what it is. Number two, a mandate is not a law. Period. It's a suggestion. And so, we are all, including you, free to choose who we follow and who we work for. Number three, you work for us. We don't work for you, and you do not work for Jay Inslee. And so, number four, let's just do what's right. How about that? Do we ever think about doing, like, what's right? Or are we just, like, political tools? I mean, let's face it, this whole mask thing is nothing less than child abuse. These kids can't breathe. They don't get enough oxygen with the mask. They breathe in their germs all day long. It's causing all kinds of teeth and gum issues, infections, lung infections. The little ones are not going to develop proper lung capacity. They can't even see who their friends are, who their classmates are, who their teachers are. You know, they can go months, or who knows how long you'll drag this out without knowing even what their teacher looks like. I mean, I personally, I think, you know, masks are good for bank robbers and terrorists. And really, that's what they are for. You know, to hide behind these things. It's just sending the wrong message to kids. Anyway, you're an educational institution, you ought to be teaching them what America is all about and, you know, what freedom is all about and what this country stands for, and not to cower behind some political tool and teach all kinds of woke, correct curriculum. Do the right thing. Okay?
All right, Linda? Is it Roper? Linda?
Yes.
Okay, great.
Hi. I don't have any kids in the school district. I am a janitor for a monastery school in town. I was, as of the 8th of October, I will be fired. Because not taking the jab. Being, last, all last year we were open. Not one kid got fired. Not one. But looking at, being a custodian, looking at those masks those kids wear, they were so bad. They were just yucky. And I think the masks are really, really hurt them. That's all I have.
Thank you. And Megan Wiseman.
Hi, I'm gonna join everybody who didn't have a whole lot of time to prepare, so I do apologize for that. I can't see the board members, but I do want to thank you guys for letting us be here. I trust that you're in there. Hi. Okay, thank you. Zoom meetings, right? It's been the past eighteen months, it's been our lives, so, and they're always just as awkward, it's awesome. I'm gonna go over a few things. I'm gonna go over why I'm here. I'm gonna go over why you guys are here. And I'm gonna go over a third thing, which is why all of these guys are here, who aren't invited in, and the ones who are. So I'm Megan Wiseman, I'm a mom, I'm not in the Ferndale School District. I am leading a coalition of parents in the Nuxak Valley School District, but we are partnering with other school districts. At this point, we have several thousand parents in this community. On four days' notice, we had five hundred of them get together to talk about how we're not going away after September first. We're not done. If you guys, and let me clarify, I don't know where you stand individually. That's something we should know. Ferndale parents especially should know. So I, when I say this, I'm speaking to all of the boards that have to this point let us down. I've been to Linden. I didn't get to attend Rudy and I went to Nuxak Valley and I watched Baker online. And every single board in this county has let us down and they don't have to. So why I'm here, I'm here because we're gonna continue to represent parents and we're going to continue to show up. And we're going to continue to be a voice because we deserve a two-way conversation with our boards. You were elected, I'm moving into number two. You were elected to represent this district. You were elected, that's why we have regions, you're each, you know, representing a different region. Because you're not representing your own viewpoints or the viewpoint of somebody at the state level, you're here. Because these parents should have a voice. If they need more accommodations, if they need more special needs accommodations for their students, or they need a longer lunch hour, if they need any of those things. Who are they supposed to go to? They're supposed to go to you guys. So we're here with a question that we should never have to ask local government. We are asking you for a choice in our children's healthcare. And that is what this is. This isn't something that we're doing because we're good citizens. This is something that impacts children's health. It is a class-two medical device. This impacts our children. And I, we can all disagree, but we've seen it. And you are each going to get a report with forty parents' testimonies. And guys, we've been to doctors in the area, we've been to pediatricians, we've been to dentists, we've been to dermatologists. And if you want to deny us, if you want to pretend that we're ignorant, you can. But we're not, and we have the evidence to back it up.
Thank you. All right, so that was our last speaker. So I appreciate everyone coming out. Obviously, I don't think any of us want to have our schools operate like this in a pandemic, but for us as board members, I think we've unified in our feeling that we are following the signs and we are following the rules that we are supposed to. With that said, tomorrow when schools open, we will open in full compliance with Governor Ensley's mandate as well as public health policy. So we, we don't feel like we can take a different choice. We think we're taking a choice that will keep our kids safe and healthy and our teachers safe and healthy. So that's, that's where we are at this point.
So are you going to be firing teachers?
Oh. We're not ready to have that discussion at this point. There's, there's no
We can't just pretend that it's a restaurant and they can take it off while they're at their desk?
We're opening tomorrow in full compliance with the governor's mandate and the public health officials guidelines of Watson County. But that's where we'll be tomorrow. Again, I want to thank everyone for coming out, speaking with us. With that, we're gonna move on to the rest of our meeting. So the next item on the agenda is the one that we're skipping, so we'll move on to presentation of student voice. This is one we've been waiting for, students, school board member Kong. He's going to present us with a summary of the student voice project he's been working on for the past six months. Dr. Quinn, do you want to add anything before I turn the meeting over to Kong?
Are you ready, Kong? So Kong, Kong, as you know, Kong's starting his second year on the school board. And in the middle of his first year, he talked to me, I always talk to our student school board members about the projects they might want to do or ways they might want to use their position on the board to, to make a difference in the school district. And Kong said that he would like to do something with student voice. And so we, as you know, we work with a group called Thought Exchange, that, we have a tool called Thought Exchange. That is a crowdsource kind of, it's not a traditional survey, you've all taken Thought Exchange. So Kong came with that he gave a Thought Exchange account to. And so Kong, at the semester, I think he joined a student leadership class at the high school. And started working with Mr. Morvik, the leadership teacher, and the students in there and has, and conducted a thought exchange. Well, we call them exchanges, they're not really surveys, but it's kind of like a section of opinions. So Kong has prepared a PowerPoint with his, with his information. And is it all set up to go, Jackson?
It is up right behind you. So Kong, just give me the go ahead and one, one more slide switch.
Okay, and I, I hope we'll be able to hear you, but speak up, okay?
Oh, hello, everyone. Before I begin, I would like to acknowledge the, the work that have been putting into this project. I would like to acknowledge my cousin Jessica La, who worked with me with this project in helping me organize and collect the data from students. And also, I would like to thank Mr. Morvik for being on the message line whenever I needed help. Because without, without him, I would probably be still thinking about how I would start this project. So as our last year began with its utmost stressful starts, with everyone being confused and freaking out whether or not school life would be forever changed. It is amazing that now we only have a few hours left until the next week starts. I believe that I have gained a lot of experience with everyone here, us learning more about how for no school create a better environment where everyone can be safe and successful in their journey in academics. From the beginning of when I was appointed as student representative, one of my top goals was in bringing more, bring more participate from student voices from different aspects and perspectives within the Ferndale High School. Starting from the beginning, I was introduced with a thought of Thought Exchange. It was when I was discussing the possibility for students to be more involved with our school system as a whole. We had a solid talk through the process, me and Dr. Quinn, and had Zoom call with the developer of Thought Exchange to further support throughout our school. The timeline, next slide, the timeline of the Student Voice Project was a long-winded, a long-winded opportunity. As there were lots of situations that prevented from being completed in the timeframe, that is what preceded. However, at the end, at the end, we were able to complete this project within the year-long process. I'm not sure you can repeat it, but.
This PowerPoint is on board docs, if anybody wants to go and look at it. Yes.
So due to the situation with online school plus various, various issues with COVID, including the new high school construction building last year, this, the last year and this year. There were lots of changes within the original planning of how I would approach the problem of student voice within the Ferndale High School. With the help of students, teachers, and hopefully, and also Thought Exchange, I was able to strategize the general question that hopefully was able to connect with students in a professional way as possible. The question that I was asked to students was, if you have a, if you have the power, ability to change slash fix something within the culture or community of our school. What would it, what would it be? How would this, how would this change and slash fix be beneficial to student at Ferndale High School? Within the result of this project, which we named it Evil Voice, the outcome was way out of expectation from any perceived point of view. With over two hundred and thirty-two participants, we have been able to receive a great amount of inputs and support that we needed from students to make this opportunity into the action that it was dreamed to be. The number, next slide, the number one hundred and ninety-three stands for the amount of students inputting ideas. The number two thirty-two stands for the amount of participants. The one hundred and fifty was idealistically the amount of feedback we have from students in writing. And lastly, the amount of four thousand two hundred and ninety-six is how much active participants given was in this project. This indicates how many times students interact with each other's questions and by reading them. Next slide. Next, we'll be moving on to the structural categories of the results. Due to the large amount of inputs, I have taken the time to select and place each input sub-student into four separate categories. In percent squad, in the tenth, and percentage-wise, as we were to take hold of various amount of factors of our high school in our current conditions. Each one of the categories has input regarding, in regarding situations that students believe that should be the main concern going into our next year. Also, keep in mind that these data results could also be influenced by the COVID situation that we are experiencing now in society. With student feelings stressed, scared, and insecure about the standpoint of academics, we could potentially see a rise in student concern in each one of these specific problems or areas. For instance, out of the nine, one hundred and ninety-three inputs as of course, and we received from students. There was about forty-nine percent of inputs related to some sort of environmental problems. However, this is, this isn't unexpected. As we are building a new high school, most of the problems students are facing now with our current high school will probably resolve within the future. Stuff like classroom heating, cooling system, water fountain, test, broken lights and roof, and other necessary school building structure are either broken or damaged. Especially the pathway to seven hundred buildings. Many, for many, these are extreme problems. Our high school is no longer a great place for students to be academically suspicious. Though oppositely, there is a feeling that these struggles could potentially help the outcome of the future as we are building a new high school. So the student hope that these problems could be a winning side perspective. Oh, are you trying to that's the environmental problem. And the next one, however, what we have next is emotional problem. From what we have known and collected from students, the rise of this problem currently stemmed from the situation with COVID and our last academic system of online school. As we could have already guessed in the seven various meetings, the last year's, the last school year was tough not only for teachers, families, but also students. According to the KFF, a non-p persistent health research and journalist website, the statistic of the overall mental health saw a rise in case, saw a case rising in sixty-four percent last year and will potentially be continued this year if there is no solution that could help impact our society or community. As I have made stated in my application for WASTA events back last ago, students, including myself at the time, were indeed deep stressed and struggling to correlate anything that is relating to academics. Even though the situation was different for everyone, the new system and online program were challenging and has impacted lots on personal lives. With over twenty-eight percent of inputs from students, which was roughly around fifty-four by voices speaking on this of issues. Regarding the emotional problems of our academic system, it is clear that we need some, some sort of changes or programs that could resolve this problem. I will speak more on the solutions on my next topic, the overall in summations. Students are depressed and motivated and don't feel like that they have, have been preparing up last year for this year academically. Next. International problem, emotional factor, there is academics. Most of the inputs from students are geared toward the engineering program that we have applied last year. In short, all of the comments from students disapprove of this program being, in continuing. Generally, it wasn't the same as being in person or having connection with teachers and other peers. Engineering program was too fast for anyone to catch up, thus our system of quarterly did not make it better. One of the reasons why students felt unprepared was due to the lack of balance. Every day was something new and there was no time to process anything the day before. Every, even though teachers utilized engineering as a teaching method and homework solution. There wasn't enough practice for students to understand a concept that was being taught. For example, if students were to have engineering all day, all day for every single day of their classes and every day was hours and hours of staying in, it's computer screen and remember materials and writing notes. But then the next day is something new and completely different that built up for the day before. Isn't that process, we, is it that repetitive process sound exhausting? This problem continues for lots of students within their daily, daily school life last year. So when we heard about students are locking themselves up in their room for hours, isn't it weird that we start to wonder why those, these issues impact the function of students' motivation and mental health? Next slide. Last but not least, we have opportunity. If I were to summarize, it is to be short and precise. Not only last year, but every year, students are missed or misinformed out on lots of events and situation within our high school. Whether it is school, from school, or anything related to being student, being a student. This problem seems like it is from the high school specifically, however, no student are able to know anything, any program, or any events that they could be a part of. For instance, there are, there are a lack of reference, representation for clubs, student-run program and recruitment for student center or maybe government program, school board, or away space. Also, any student, which just that school would do a better job of having a good and solid plan of what is going on. There are events and planning that are done by students with great amount of effort, but at the end of the day, everything must be canceled or moved on to another period. In, in truth, this isn't anyone specifically in D C and H, COVID is uncertain and within any, any certain aspect. The student would love to know and support or how, if the requirement is necessary. Because currently, students are being communicated and our effort, our efforts are being wasted. This also include the prospect of creating a new opportunity with helping students have a help. With our school nowadays having strict rules, there is nothing going on inside or outside of school that, of school, but be having, but some extra activities and studies. Student-run programs for student help sections can't be functional. If school won't allow students to do anything, there are no assembly, there's no open campus, no fun events, no nothing that ease student mind of returning back from school, returning back from school with their stress from last year except for a construction site. This is a big time where, you know, questions. Anyone have questions?
Want to wait till the end, make some comments? Go ahead, I think.
At this time, before I continue on, I would like to talk something about the open campus situations. Jesse, do you want to go first?
In leadership, we talked about the school handbook that they're saying that we are not an open campus and we're not allowed to eat in our cars. That we eat either in the cafeteria or in the outside park, but because we live in Washington, we have the terrible weather, it's constantly raining and trying to fit four different grades into a cafeteria and outside area, this does not seem like at all like it's gonna work. Like trying to keep the six feet apart or three feet apart and like trying to make sure everyone is like not gonna get COVID and being outside it when it's raining or windy, this does not seem like at all a great idea. I feel like we should be able to eat in our cars or at least like, I think the cars would be a great idea, but I'm okay with not the open campus. It's a risk, but at least letting us eat in our car would be great.
In addition to that, lots of students are mad about how unfair this school has been after numerous rules have been settled on, on the school after COVID. According to the admin of Ferndale High School, you aren't allowed to have assemblies, events, or social gathering that are inside due to COVID procedures. What the down, downside of What the down one downside of this measure is that we, it has lowered the spirits of student and their freedom. However, the other weird is that student, uh, the high school also doesn't allow students to leave campus during school hours or lunches. This, uh, it is reasonable that student, uh, require permissions for these actions, but at the end of the day, uh, there is none of that. According to the handout that we got yesterday, it is state involved that student will not allow to eat in the vehicle. Whether it is seen in the senior lot or the junior, junior lot, all students will be eating in the cafeteria, gym or courtyard. Uh, but my question is, aren't, uh, aren't these compact spaces? Even though school promises that to have assigned seating, uh, if we were to eat in the cafeteria or gym, these are compact spaces which are inside and students are unmasked eating. So yeah, lots of students are confused or whether or not this was something that's still we're thinking about because we are allowed to have assemblies or any other events are inside. However, we are required to eat inside without a mask, the social gathering, which we will confuse about. So back to the, uh, back to the PowerPoint. With the next step, after all of these results, payment inputs, the simplest idea is to have a discussion with the board, uh, with the board of what to do next. However, during the time of this project, which have been in its organizing state, there are already lots of solutions happen in the, in the making. For example, even though the factors that we have discussed so far has lots of similarity, similarity treaty and connections to each other in some ways. In dealing with the problems of environmental fact, uh, factor, the core stem from the idea of students not having enough support and resources from school in order to help them rise to the best of their abilities. However, these problem could or potentially could be resolved within the next few years of our new high school. I believe that, uh, within my next project, when school is returning, it would be a good idea to make a news outlet or some sort of explanation announcement to help reassure students on various problems. Then I can follow up with, uh, their strategies and discussions to help with more student concern address. Um, and these, uh, on this next slide, these are some of the, these are three of the most, the top comments from students from our thought change. Um, there has, uh, there, uh, there, yeah, I don't know if you want to just read it, but what they are.
On that second one, we also know more online, was that said as a positive or a negative?
Um, it wasn't.
Okay, so they were, they said that there was no more online.
So you mentioned you were, you, someone had, or you have guidelines for the school that goes over lunches and breaks and things like that. So what, what do you think is driving the statement that no one knows exactly what is going on with high school? What is, what is, is that about lunches and in between classes or is that more about curriculum than other questions?
Um, this statement came last spring.
Yeah.
This is, this is a dated statement. I think this was from the, um, last year. All of your data you collected last year.
Last year, okay. And also another thing to add in is that usually right now, I mean, it's COVID time and everything is still unknown. Um, lots of students' health planning and also events, which, which we planned last spring was canceled or changed during this kind of like year. And we still aren't sure of what's going on or like when things are back. Like we just need some sort of like explanations or some sort of like, you know, um, some sort of detail on when or like how could we move on from all of these things?
But so, so it's, it's an awkward time because you're gonna start back to school tomorrow and some of this may get sorted out within person school, but I think when you were collecting this uh, was right before students went back full time.
Yeah, it was mostly people from half of the school was student person.
It was when we, we were hybrid. So as Con, when Con and I discussed this, things like you know, forty-nine percent were environmental issues at the high school, those are all the reasons we're building a new high school.
Yeah.
And, and they're very valid, but, but some of the others don't have quite as simple and, and things like, um, the academics file that's up there, most of it had to do with, um, most of the concerns that you got were about the online school and edgenuity and all. Well, that's gonna resolve itself, because we're not gonna use that this year. Um, the mental health ones and the opportunity ones, I think are the ones that we can, we need to talk, you know, those we need to talk about, are they going to be resolved as we go back into a new school year? And how are we gonna do that? Does that make sense? I mean, the, the environmental issues are still gonna be there, but we're addressing.
I think some of the comments on academics, it's, meanwhile, COVID seems to have been going on and on and on and on and on. Thinking in the terms of a high school career, it isn't a transient thing. For me as a forty-eight-year-old person, it's like, oh, it's a couple of years, but for Jesse as a high school junior, Jazzy, I'm sorry. Jazzy as a high school junior, you were in Ferndale, the building for like five months. Yeah, so.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes, when I was a high school principal, I used to remind staff all the time, it's one year in our career, it's some kids only sophomore year.
Yep.
Or only junior year, we have to make every year, but all I'm saying is that probably some of those concerns are ones that that deserve less of our attention than some of the others.
Hmm, the next one is, is another comments, but a heartfelt one. In summations to high school, we students used to know and love so much. Were like a family and community, but nowadays, uh, students feels like, uh, things are slowly falling apart. Um, I don't know if you agree, uh, that's. On my next slide. Uh, are, on the next slides, follow, on the following discoveries are are, um, some words effects, uh, and puzzle from student, which through the, the diet change amazing analyzing program. The, uh, the result was, uh, able to take apart student sentences and piece them together like, uh, using words that students use the most. Um, if there were a puzzle, this is how we, uh, this is how the edgenuity program, I mean, uh, the diet chain program pieces together. This is how students think that, uh, this, these are the words that students use the most. One thing I realized after reading through all of these with help. Our specific color, color relate to helps you that few wants and beliefs that should be happening at high school. For instance, thank everyone, people, if I were to inter, uh, interpret, uh, interpret these words. It would be a sign that student wishes that, uh, the school would think more about everyone and the individual of people that are in our high school. Um, same goes for the word feel included, important, involve spirit, community. Students want to feel included in our, in our, in our school, being involved in things and having their spirits back from the high school and our community. And yeah, these, and the other ones were extras, instructions like for small campus, open lunch, many students want that, more fun days. How they like the good changes that are happening, uh, but and also like edgenuity, edgenuity, lots of work, uh, better next year, assemblies and water fountain. And that's it. Oh, uh, forgot, uh, th- these are some of the extra, uh, questions that we have took in during our Eagle Voice or thought change, uh, and then how. Um, this school you, uh, the question was asked was, this school have been both new and stressful overall, how would you rate your mental health? Uh, fifteen percent, twenty-nine percent, and fifty-six. And that's one. How would you rate the new things you have learned this year? Twenty-one percent, fifteen percent, sixty-four percent. And this next slide, it was just because last year, um, lots of event was being canceled, so the, uh, the event of planning a school festival to uplift student spirits were in planning, but was canceled. That was moved with this year, but, uh, lots of students wishes that this, that it would be company this year, but I'm not sure now with the COVID thing. And then that's it, that's it.
That's really good, thank you. So I didn't, I call it, are we gonna repeat some of these questions later in this year? Or another thought exchange?
Yeah.
And, um, I, I realized that both of you came here today with a um, mission to make your voices known on behalf of fellow students about open campus and closed campus and eating in cars. I don't, I, I will check into that and get back to you and we'll, we'll talk about it. I do know that for, um, the construction project has a lot to do with, uh, that. That there's a, having students going to school on an active construction site creates, uh, new kinds of safety issues and that we've, we've talked some about. I'm not exactly sure the reason about not eating in cars, but I will follow up with, um, Dr. Jeff and Mrs. Dylan. And we'll get some answers to that. The one thing I would suggest is, um, we have a pretty new administrative team down there. And maybe give them a few weeks to get things going and then maybe we can figure out. But I, I think it's a valid, valid questions to ask and, um, I, I get where you're seeing the contradictions. We're working around those old problems, okay?
And one of the points that might be helpful is if you, if, you know, put the construction on campus and safety, that's certainly a priority, but explaining the reasoning might be helpful to the students just you know, for them to understand that there is a valid reason.
I think they did some of that, but having lived through as a high school principal, the process of closing a campus, I'm gonna tell you that it's never popular.
No.
So, uh, yeah, but I, I think that was part of their, but remember, they haven't been, not everybody came to orientation, they haven't been back in tomorrow, I imagine, I'll get some more explanation, but, um, I will follow up with you guys on that.
Thank you.
Uh, I know you're new to the board, but I guess. You know, or that, who can help you, who can help us. All right, the next item, seven point oh one is a standard.
Discuss just a little bit more. The, um, the school spirit and the community and such, it's like, I know a lot of those things with, you know, having assemblies, having festivals are totally, you know, what can build community spirit or school spirit. That being said, with COVID happening and not wanting to make each other sick or people in our community sick. Are there any sorts of brainstorming by you guys of what we can do to build community spirit that does not include large gatherings?
Oh, one thing that was recently happened was the freshman orientations, that was in a sample. Uh, we were just wondering why this, we allowed the freshman orientation to happen, but not the other or something.
I, I don't know, we, I, I really need to, you know, I'll, I'll find out.
Do you think though in leadership that you might have opportunities to think outside the box of things that don't require heartbreaks as much? There's got to be.
In leadership, most of the project we do are mostly related to connecting everyone in our high school as a whole. So usually large gathered assemblies and events, those are, you know, connecting everyone. So, but I'm not when we were discussing, discussing about plans like with the festival and events, there weren't a lot of, you know, uh, normal, uh, how can I say, uh, participations for like events that could help bring in more student spirits.
Hmm.
That is, that is without a big hype.
I wonder if you had like, I don't know, like, uh, poster competitions or, you know, uh, bill, uh, bumper stickers or something where people kind of show their, that sort of way and it's like, you know, vote for your favorites.
I don't know, um, with those, be like, for the opportunity side, that's about student-run programs and also mental health, uh, like student-run programs and other student-run participant events are also being canceled. So we aren't sure how can we run those.
I'm taking notes, I will, I will. It just, I feel, I'm, I'll wrap up, I swear. I feel bad for the leadership and the students to be focusing on, we can't have assemblies or we can't have large gatherings. And I think that there's a certain point of focusing on what can we do, which requires a different way of thinking of things.
Yeah.
And it sucks because you'd rather have an assembly or, you know, but there's got to be some other sort of, and maybe other schools across country.
Right now, Morvik is trying everything he can do to, and like the seniors and all of us trying everything we can do to unite everyone in other ways than like usually an assembly. Some do help, but we are trying to figure out other ways too.
Yeah.
Believe you know, I said, you know, posters, bumper, dressing up, uh, first, how do I say this, but you know, wearing a mask that supports your favorite club, you know, um, things of that nature, just to try and make a little light of, you know, the situation, I mean.
Jazzy, are you in leadership this year?
Yes, I am in leadership too.
And are you in leadership this year? Okay, so that's where I can find you, okay?
Yeah, I know all week, uh, Morvik wants us to wear blue and gold to unite us, so I'm definitely gonna try to do that, I'm bringing out my spirits here.
Which period?
I have six.
Okay. Um, I, for one, another problem is that with how things are right now currently with COVID and stuff, um, we, last year with like a half student in school and half student online. Uh, we were, we did try out some, you know, competitions or like the picture online and things that motivate students to be feel connected as in our school as a community. But with everything new and students aren't being comfortable with, you know, sharing, so, um, we are trying our best to try new things and, uh, get everyone together. But it's just that lots of students just feel like they just miss that off. This, and lots of schools and restrictions this year just cancel everything else altogether and.
Okay.
Well, again, great work, we look forward to phase two.
Thank you.
All right, now we'll move on to the standard report on our bond project, turn the floor over to.
Thank you, um, so the last, we can have, so the, the kind of the biggest focus, um, of everybody down on the, on the job site and around campus was, um, making sure the safety plan is outlined and well-understood and uh, communicated, um, as far as like Dr. Quinn had mentioned, the trying to operate school, large, busy, um, school on an active construction site, so um, a lot of, uh, effort and energy has been put into making sure, um, there's a, a very secure perimeter and a line of demarcation, uh, from the, the student side and the construction side, so, um, there is a, uh, a, a very secure fence line, um, that clearly identifies walking paths, exit routes, um, traffic flow, including a covered walkway where it gets the, kind of the tightest pinch point in the, uh, between the building and the construction site. Um, protect from overhead, um, issues and, and any, uh, but any mishaps, um, also the access road, um, from the, uh, railroad, uh, crossing, uh, from the, the back by the C T E. Uh, there's also a traffic flow for students going to greenhouse and aquaculture. Uh, so, uh, Corriston is actually, um, So Corristone is actually installed gates. So there are actually gates that that open and close that block for students and for vehicle traffic. And there's a flagger that is there to help kind of work as a crossing guard to mitigate the 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 passing of students and vehicles. So we're we're being extremely diligent on that. Making sure everything is is as tight as it could possibly be. So Ken Kiten from CSG actually walked the perimeter and took photos of every single little detail of, you know, even if a bucket was out of place or a place where we need gravel put in so it wouldn't be a trip hazard. And annotated it on the on the drawings and Corristone took that and basically made sure that everything was was buttoned up tight. So Tex Ladish from CSG and Eric Tripp from the high school walked that site yesterday just to verify everything was indeed shipshape and everything is is secured, ready to go. Eric reported that the Mr. Tripp reported that the staff, high school staff had been briefed and was fully supportive on board with the all the protocols that are in place. So I spent a lot of time on that because you've spent a lot of time on that. That's a huge focus. It's one of the big reasons Cornerstone was selected as our our GCCM because they have a lot of history and experience working on very compact, complicated occupied sites and it's it's proving to be a good selection. They're very diligent and serious about the about the safety. The exciting construction news of the week is we had our first slab tour, which is kind of a landmark on any job project. So the classroom wing actually has a concrete slab. So the very kind of the beginnings of what we might recognize as a as a building has begun. There's billions of dollars buried underground.
Coming out of the ground.
We're out of the ground. Very excited. Unfortunately, we had to cancel the tour, as you know, do some COVID on the job site, but we will try to reschedule that. Once we've got everything back under control that way. And next month, the bond oversight committee will be coming to present their latest quarterly report. I know they have been working diligently on getting that ready. So that's my report unless you have questions.
All right, well, thank you, Mark. And you can find more information about our bond projects as well as the bond oversight committee on the district website. And then the weekly bond updates that Dr. Quinn publishes every Friday. Last week's update was number one hundred and twenty-two. All right, the next item seven point oh two is a focus on district operations, review, monitoring reports for operational expectations policy five. Financial planning. So we got this last and so at this time, I'll open up for any questions or discussion of the report.
The opening was like a novel. No, I was, I was, but no, I mean, a good novel. I was kind of like, yeah, this is, this would be an interesting book to read. I don't want to live it again.
I know it was long.
It was well documented that the point you made as far as that part, that that introduction to summary was a critical portion of what shaped that, but it really didn't come out in the, you know, the
Monitoring.
Monitoring criteria and such. So it was nice to have that and to have that historically recorded because at this point, we remember down the road, a few years more, we're not gonna, how's that go? I also really loved the district improvement plan draft or whatever exactly. A segment of it where things were really it was it was like the rubber meeting road where it was coming together and that everything kind of had its place. So recognizing the kind of work that goes into that, that it was, I think that's what our goal was to have and it really puts it into perspective. You know, putting the the money where our mouth is.
I thought your points of saying that a lot of our monitoring indicators don't really reflect that spending our money with what our values are and we've done a lot of work to do that. It seemed to me as I was going through the monitoring indicators because I'm I had every single one of them compliant, which I've never had anything close to that because I'm usually like really hard with a pen. Because I like to think about them and what can we do better? But it seemed like so many of them were like, this is the law. You know, we, of course we do this and if we don't, we're in real big trouble. But thankfully, our audits always come through. Stick and stay or as far as I know, they've always come through stick and fan after a long time. So it almost seems like you could have one indicator saying the audit was clean. Which is we did our, we followed the law, et cetera. And then most of the indicators focus on how have we reflected with our finance finances, this part of our mission, that part of our mission, this part of our values, that part, that sort of thing. So I'd have one of them say we followed the law. And everything else say, did we follow our values?
Yeah, I I put the same comment I wrote was, most of our indicators are required items that lot. The recommendations that Dr. Quinn put forth would help us to personalize only five different. And I I think you laid out a good list of recommendations to make at least one specific session. But we probably even better.
I will just throw out that after talking to all they feel like Burnell is exceptional in in our audit. So despite saying that's the law, of course we do it. There are districts that fail some of those things that we routinely pass and it comes out to expect. So we appreciate the leadership and direction on that that keeps us exceptional.
Maybe having one of the indicators list what the take home message from the auditor was. Do they have like a summary statement?
Yeah.
With that as an indicator. I do want to make a commendation on what a great job Burnell has done in translating all of this finance into layman's terms and then putting it out there to the public in many different ways. We have it on the website. We have it in board docs. We've got it on the Thursday meetings. And even thinking of more ways so that it's accessible to people in different forms of how they want to access it. I think we've done a really good job with that and there's even more opportunity to do more. I mean, like a visual, a video. You know, little, you know, Mark, you're so personable and good on camera, I'm sure.
A budget video, that's.
I think that's one of the things I noticed, you know, we have written lots of little things to explain this and that and whatever. We need a place to collect them. And that, you know, because we've worked really hard to put a complicated funding system in into a story that makes sense to people who don't live it every day. But we just need, we just need to be more intentional about housing that.
And the more we can spread that word and that people want to access it, the more you they understand and you create more ambassadors and maybe people understand what we do.
Yeah, I I this process is really been educational. Forces me to think big picture about an aspect of our operation, forces all of us to.
Leanne? Comments?
Um, I really appreciate what Kevin and Melinda have said. At the first part did read like a novel and I thought this could be so boring and it's not. And I wanted to keep reading it. Why, I thank you for that, Linda. And I do think that what's the heart of our budget? What's our heart when it comes to the budget? That how do we, how do we incorporate some of that into those monitoring? Monitoring checks that we end up putting in there versus just the legal stuff, which is super important and I'm glad we're doing so well with it, but.
I have one other commentation question, idea, what have you. With our our minimum fund balance and how it has gotten, like our minimum is supposed to be four percent. And we're way higher than four percent. And I know that the state requires a minimum fund balance, right? That's one of, they don't. Oh, okay. I thought it was a state requires. It gets us good marks on an audit though. Can, is there any anything stopping us from having a lid where if it gets, like, say we go above fifteen percent or so, that we say, we're gonna use this money on this academic resource for something. So that for a couple of reasons. One is when an election comes up later, like on a levy, people don't say, ah, you have enough money in the bank. Use that. Be like, if it has already been committed to something, then it's it's committed and that's what we're using for. The other thing too is I had I worry as far as for you know, in negotiation or contracts things, if it's, well, you have this much extra in the fund balance, so maybe we can I just, I don't want a big, it's taxpayer money. I don't want us having a pile of money that's growing. I want it. I want the public and our employees and unions or whoever to know like this money is going to be spent in this sort of way.
There is no rule that says you cannot have cap. I would suggest or advise that you leave some latitude as to what the uses of the funds would be for. So you can adapt to the particular circumstance that you find yourself in at the time you get there.
Yeah, because like for a long time, it was gonna be to repair for a high school. Well, we don't want to put it in, we're gonna repair for a high school and then it's committed to that and then we pass it on. We can't, how do we reallocate it?
Right, so it's kind of, I mean, what you're outlining is basically the process that we're going through, right? We built it for a reason. And now we're spending it because things changed and we have that safety that we didn't really need as much as we have. So now we're planning to spend it down. So it's, you're basically looking to formalize what we're
Yeah.
Which is fine, there's no reason not.
Thought it was getting so high and without something formalized writing. And I guess it was formalized. It's in a place where it's easily accessible to the public. I don't know.
You probably don't remember, but that is one of the topics that I wrote about last year. Yeah. Because it was happening all over the state. And that, you know, we had many conversations as superintendents that all of us in a weird way ended up with a fund balance that was bigger than what we're comfortable with. And part of it was hedging our bets against the way we're funded. Transportation is a perfect example. We were paid money, we're paid, we're paid money after the fact. So the money we collect one semester, correct me if I'm wrong, is based on ridership in a previous semester. So we're still collecting, but we know we're not gonna get it down the line because nobody's riding buses for it. So everybody was saving that money, you know, and so there were a number of things during the pandemic and when we were online school that are creating that issue all over in districts everywhere. And so it is one of the things that I addressed last year, but like I said, it was probably in a response to a community question and not everybody reads those, you know, we just need to need to be thinking about maybe there does need to be a financial thing every a movie every month.
But hopefully, you know, Linda's novels outline, we we've been through some really tumultuous times for an extended period. You know, the last like ten years or so between the great recession and the financing changes and the the state formulas and the pandemic and the levy call or the, you know, we haven't had a kind of a multiple year stretch of normal for quite some time. So
When I came here, we were not in good shape.
No.
Financially was very, and so it's probably why I'm a little nervous about letting us get to that point. Some drastic decisions to
Having that that a little bit higher than maybe, you know, the minimum fund balance allows a lot of continuity and stability to the organization because, you know, we can absorb fairly good sized shifts or you know, transportation funding or grass being cut or, you know, it doesn't devastate the operation. We're not running that most of the best, that it allows us to maintain property program.
Is it safe to say that that fund balance also was a big reason why our bond rating was what it was, which saved community money?
Yeah, that's huge.
You know.
Oh, it was, it was probably the deciding factor that got our credit rating.
Yeah.
Which ends up not giving us any money, but saving our taxpayers money. Because our bond rate is, we're, we're, to say that, I don't want to jinx it because Mark and I just had our third rating call last week.
Yeah.
And hopefully we'll keep our rating where it is.
Other questions or comments? Thank you, board members, for your comments and you can give me your cover sheets or send it to me and I will summarize. I will put it in the minutes of the next meeting. Jackson will handle it until I do it. We'll have that ready for you for the next meeting. As a reminder, we will vote on this policy report at our September meeting through the consent agenda. All right, the next item on our agenda is seven point oh three and this is receipt policy monitoring report from Superintendent Quinn. So at this time, I will call on her to tell us about the report that she's delivering tonight.
So the the one tonight is, is actually goes hand in hand with financial planning or financial planning, yes. It's asset protection. And and as I was, you'll find that it's only a page long introduction to this one, a little bit longer in the what I think may be some of the follow up. But once again, the indicators themselves are pretty dry and boring, but I've I've inserted a cup a little bit. There is more about fund balance in there too. You'll, you'll see.
My favorite topic.
Yeah, I know. And so and how but but anyway, you have a hard copy, so I I think we'll just wait and talk about that in September.
Any questions from the board? Leanne, any questions? Okay. All right, so the next item eight point oh one we need to ratify contracts and agreements with employee groups. And so there's been a lot of work done in the background on this for a number of months. And so I'm gonna turn it over to John to talk about the collective bargaining agreements that have already been ratified by members of the unions that they represent. And now it's our turn to to take a look at those and possibly vote to to approve or ratify. So, John?
Let's scoot over here a little bit. Yeah, so in our school district, we have about seven hundred employees. They belong to six labor groups. And then we have a group of unrepresented people. Some professional technical folks and some of our administrators are unrepresented employees. Of those six employee groups that that bargained a contract, four of them were open for bargains this year. The two that were not were teamsters who represents our bus drivers and mechanics, our transportation and PSC, which is our food service and our
and PSC, which is our food service and our parent educators. Those two were not open. The four that were open were SEIU, who represents our custodians and maintenance folks. FEA, which represents our teachers and other certificated teaching staff. Our principals and then FAW, which is the Ferndale Association of Administrative Assistance. And so what I'd like to do is just give you a little summary of, of what happened with each group. And then give you a chance to, to ask questions as, as you'd like. First group is, is actually fairly simple. SEIU, our maintenance and, or maintenance and custodial folks. We started, we had our very first bargaining session and then they decided that due to some internal things with their organization and some COVID considerations that they actually didn't want to bargain. So they came to me and said, we would like to do a memorandum of understanding, which made no changes to their, their contract. Gave them the IPD implicit price deflator, which was two percent this year. That's amount set by the state for, think of it a lot like a cost of living type increase. And asked that they could bargain a year from them. So next spring, spring of twenty two. So very simple. Next group is FEA, our teachers and, and certificated group. In the end, they agreed to a, a three year agreement, which is significant. It gives them some stability over time. And I think it actually shows an increase in, in cooperation and trust. We, in it, a couple of significant things, we built in three potential days for, for staff development the week before school starts, which will allow us to do more work with staff when we, when we need to. Previously, we couldn't do anything before the first day of the day before the first day of school. That was important. It also allows us to give a recognition. You know about national board certification, which goes a stipend to, to teachers that have earned that recognition. Our ESAs are educational service associates, our people like our OTs, PTs, speech therapists. There are also national recognitions for those guys. We didn't have any recognition, any monetary recognition for that previously. Other districts did. We were at a competitive disadvantage. So we bargained that in as, as well. It's we simplified, we've had these class size numbers for, for several bargains. It was extremely complicated. We simplified that language down to, to make it easier to understand, easier for, for on both ends to meet those meet those requirements. And then you may remember in our last bargain, our CTE, our, our career and technical educational stipends went way down. And in looking at it across the county, they went down further than they should have. So we, we increased them slightly in order to be more in line with what they would be receiving if they worked for any other district in the, in the county. In, in pay. When we did the first bargain after McCleary, we felt like more should have been done for our beginning teachers. And so in the first year of this bargain, our, our, our folks that are in the first seven years with us or in teaching are getting five and a half percent and the people that are at the top have steps eight through sixteen are getting five percent. So just a little bit of a difference to, to start to balance that out. In the second year, everybody gets five percent in the third year, four percent.
Can you explain that again? The first seven years of their career with Ferndale?
So there's a salary matrix that has sixteen years on it. After sixteen years, you're at the top. So the top half of it would be years zero through seven, bottom is eight through sixteen. So there was five and a half percent at the top and five at the bottom.
All the numbers are going to go up by five.
Does that make sense?
So your first year teacher, your increase will be five and a half percent. Once you've been your, your eighth year teacher, then your increase is five.
Eventually you're going to get to those other years.
We're taking this, this chart and changing all the numbers to up them. Yeah, it's not, yeah. The top half are going to go up by five and a half percent. These are only going to go up by five percent. Where are you on it?
Yeah, yeah. It was, I understood that part. It was something about the years five, six and seven that I think.
Okay. The next group I'd like to talk about is the Association of Administrative Assistance. They also had a three year agreement. They added a section for what we call early notification of resignation. There is an interest in, in our organization to know who is going to be leaving our organization so we can work to more systemically fill positions. And so we're offering a small stipend for them telling us early, which allows us to have a more orderly transition in between. Boy, so we built that in as already. It started with our, our teachers' union and then we added it for our PSC or, or other classified folks there. And then we, we bargained it with this group as well. It's something that's mutually beneficial. The other thing we did is we added some hours to a few positions. We had some administrative assistants that were, were leaving right when the kids left, which could be problematic if there's, there's issues with buses or, or things not going well at the end of the day. And so we, we added thirty minutes to several positions across the district. Most of those were at the elementary level with administrative assistant too. So the, the registrar type positions. And then the other thing that we did is we, there previously was a reference to the increases that our teachers got were linked to our administrative assistance that was put in a long time ago. And it really, it served a purpose in, in competitive salaries. It was creating a competitive imbalance at this time. And so we've removed that language, which was a big thing because it was security that they knew that they would be getting the same increases. That's no longer the, the case. Part of the, the give and take with that negotiation is where the, the teachers issued out five and a half percent. Our administrative assistants got six this year. They also got five, just like the teachers next year. And they got four and a half rather than four in the third year. And I mean, it's a complicated conversation, but that was one of the big things was giving them a little bit of security while we transitioned out of that, that language that linked them to FEA. You'll notice that you don't have an actual contract for, well, you have a contract, but it's the existing contract for FAW in your, your board dots right now. And that's because we did a lot of work and FAW is still in the rewriting process. What you do have is you have a summary of the major things that happen kind of point by point. Those things are translated into contract language that's already been decided on. And it's just in the process of being put into that large document and the old language being taken out and their drafting hasn't been completed, but the, all of the language has been decided. There's none of it that is, is left or ambiguous at this point in time. And then the last group is our principals. They also agreed to a three year agreement. A couple of things that happened with them is they, they used to have three personal days and they had vacation days. In this bargain, they bargained away the, the personal days. They no longer have those. And that's part of us trying to get a little bit more consistent across our, our district. And so there are no salaried people left in our districts that have both vacation days and personal days. They are teachers, because they don't have vacation days, do have personal days. Our administrators do not.
There's our parents, our, our people who work just on a school year. They don't have a case at school, you know, school, student school year. They don't have vacation. They get a personal day if they need to take a day off. All of our employees who have vacation and our salary. It was just confusing. When do I use a, what's the difference between a personal day and a vacation day? They're, they, you know, so we, just like John said, simplifying and standardizing.
Along with that, what we've done is we've allowed them, they, they do have vacation days, has allowed them to buy back more of their vacation days. Sorry, sellback. More of their vacation days, which was kind of compensating for that. The increases for our, our principals group in the first year is six point six. If you'll remember, last year our principals were one group that didn't take any sort of increase at all. And so one point six is what our, our FAW had, FEA had last year. So we gave it to them this year along with the five percent, which matches the, the lower paid, sorry, the higher paid teachers increase from this year. And then in year two and year three, it looks exactly like what they, there was an FEA five percent and four percent over year two. Wow, that's a lot of numbers and thoughts. What, what do you, what do you want to know?
So how do we compare to other districts based on what we know? It, it seems like and maybe good for us, but we're, we're, we've got some pretty hefty raises for our teachers and staff and all.
Yeah.
Well deserved. So I'm not saying it's not, but I'm wondering, how are we stacking up to other districts?
Part of, part of what you hear in this bargain is some of the results of not doing as much as other districts did the year of the levy failure. So there's a little bit more there this year. The answer to your question, we look at that really carefully. We are the second largest district in the county and we have in general, the second highest salaries across our employee groups in, in the county.
We are never ahead of them. Even though we compete with them. We, we, we try to be somewhat competitive, but we never get, I don't think any of them.
The, the one group is the one I talked about was our, our administrative assistants. We're moving ahead and then would have moved further ahead of, of Bellingham, which is part of why that language that served them really well for a while was no longer in everybody's best interest. And we also have, wasn't in this group, but not our custodians, but our maintenance folks are, are high in the county. And that's a don't know how far back that goes. It certainly predates my involvement with it, but we're trying to get a little bit of balance between our custodians or maintenance, but that's next year's, next year's bargain.
So the FEA and the administrative assistants, they're both a three year contract. What, how long would the other ones?
All of them.
The principals is the other three year and then SEIU was the MOU for one year and then we'll bargain next year. Both Teamsters and PSC are also open for negotiations in a year.
Not to do apples to oranges necessarily, but what are, what are raises are like across county, not just, but in general for the public. Are you, do you guys look at that too? How would stack up the industry and things like that?
What we really look at, Andrew, is, is other school districts. We're looking at, at being able to attract and retain a specialized group of, of employees. You know, our employees with, with a few exceptions are ones that necessarily go back and forth between the private and public sector with great regularity. So if somebody's going to leave us, they're probably going to leave us for a teaching job in another district or a parent job in another district. So most of our comparisons are school to school. You know those numbers really well.
Questions, Leanne? Well, thanks, John. So at this point I want to ask the board two questions. And actually, do you want to approve the version of the FAA contract that we've been presenting tonight or delay voting on this one?
It isn't the final, final contract.
It hasn't been.
It's, it's, you have the contract and you have the, if you're comfortable that we're going to merge those and then you can vote on it.
No change in terms?
Only the ones that are listed in the, in the, you know, that are.
Right, but.
The SEIU, oh wait, I'm sorry. FEA, SEIU and FPA, they're all like final, no more separate numbers, but the FAA.
We call that FAW.
Yeah, I had to count my A's. I would think voting on the three that are complete and then the next one, I'm, I just.
Yeah, this could be, I mean, I don't suspect there's going to be any issue, but it'd be nice to vote on the contract as opposed to the idea.
Is that anticipated to be ready for September meeting?
Well, it needs to be ready. I think it needs a special meeting. We would really like to implement these in September, which means that we need to have them finalized.
Causes some pay issues.
Really causes pay issues and a lot of extra work.
We don't have it in place for September.
We have to do back pay with.
It's just a whole separate process.
So the question is, if you need to see the language that's described in the summary in the contract, if you're going to read the contract that way, then you should wait. If it's the terms that you're interested in, then the summary sheet does, I think, a quality job of that. It would delay the increase for that group, but.
Well. Got it.
Study, September study session.
If we, if we get a study session early enough or in not, in making special reading, we can we can probably do them.
I don't like the idea of causing pay delays and such later, but I also like the idea of voting on something that's deep.
Yeah.
I just, I worry about the hardship side of it. So I can go either way. I think I would tend to vote to approve it now just because of that.
With that fact of approving based on summary.
Yeah, there's no further negotiations.
It's, it's clean up.
Okay, I'm good with voting on it then.
All right. So I'm open for a motion.
So I would move that we ratified the presented contracts.
The four. All right. So it's been moved that we ratified the four contracts with the terms that's presented. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Opposed? Alright, motion here. Thanks, John. And, and these contracts represent a lot of work for a lot of folks, you in particular, but also on our teachers and, and there is another staff. So thank you for that. Um, it's great that I think our district opens and folks will get about being here and we're not worried about our teachers leaving us further places. Alright, the next series of items represent regular opportunities for sharing by the participants in our board meetings, so.
Oh, I, I think.
Yeah, I'm sorry. My fault. Thank you. Uh, so then we need to discuss and authorize a lease renewal with Northwest. EST one eighty-nine for use of Mountain View Elementary School facility, so. Believe on.
Mark.
Yeah, this is a, this is a renewal of the, uh, lease we've had in place since nineteen eighty-nine, EST, for use of the lower wing, um, house, the discovery program.
Any change in their terms or is it just a straight renewal?
No, just a straight.
An annual?
Oh, you know what? Don't approve this.
Yeah, I was gonna say.
Yep, it's a, uh, nope, this is the wrong.
I don't think.
Wrong document, so don't.
I think we'll save this to a, the special meeting.
Yep. Yep, this is a, got a three-year term instead of a one-year option renewal. It's the, the original lease was written as a original three-year with, then after that rolled into one-year renewals. This document they submitted actually starts over with a three-year instead of continuing.
They would like to do this. We gave them three years because they, remember, they put quite a bit of money into it. And it was not really fair to ask them to put that money into it, not give them some guarantee. But at some point, if we want that building back, we wanted, um, we, after three years, we told them it was gonna be a year to year. My recommendation would be that you, well, especially this way, but that we do, um, renew for this year. We have no, no plans for that building lower half this year. But I also think it needs to be considered much before the day before school starts.
Yes.
For the annual.
And, and the, the problem with this is it's a twelve-month notice, so we can cancel, but it's a twelve-month notice, so, um, it, it ties us up for two years, so.
So where, you will see this.
We'll rework that.
Okay, you will see this. That's what I thought. Okay.
Yes, here.
Yeah, I'm an issue.
Alright, now moving on to the next items for board sharing. So, um, I'll call on our student board members if they have other things to share on the eve of starting school.
My first.
Oh, uh, I'm all, I'm all shared out, but. So, uh, so last, uh, last, or in our last school board meeting, I was, I was saying something about with the Y, the uh, L Y A C. Um, so, um, unfortunately, the week before the event, when me going to Olivia started, um, there was news that because COVID is on the rise, lots of students weren't able to make it, so we had to make it online. Oh, so I, we sat on a Zoom call and we just kind of, you know, go over the situation, policies and talks about how the organizations or, uh, the member together. Um, there is about twenty-two members, second year's is eleven number and first year also eleven numbers. Um, the first year member, uh, ha, uh, also, uh, is able to, you know, contribute, contribute into, you know, the recommendations and policymaking. But because we aren't, you know, like, not knowledgeable and like, you know, the system, we, we just learn.
And next year, you'll change the world.
Um, we're adopting my brother's credit, so.
Oh.
Yeah, I'm adopted, so, and we're adopting our biological siblings, which I got.
That's very cool. Congratulations.
Alright, elected board members.
I can go. I was like, I got nothing, but no, I got some. So, um, my oldest son is away at college and I remember when he went away to college and he was gonna be out of state and I was thinking like, oh, I'll go and visit him. And I have never really gotten to go to visit him, but I get to go visit him and we can have some. He's probably not as excited.
Karen, Leanne.
Yes, I do. Uh, so Linda put some of this into our Monday update, but I just wanna make sure folks are aware that, um, the General Assembly that was supposed to be in Spokane, in person at the end of September has now become virtual. And there's no cost to attend and it will be probably the, like around the last weekend of October. So you guys are all welcome to attend. We'd have to talk about who wants to be the voting member, but, um, that's an option. Then the regional meeting that's happening in October is at this moment going to be hybrid. And so you can sign up to attend in person or you can attend virtually. Again, there's no cost. It's gonna be a ninety-minute meeting from eleven thirty to one, I believe, or eleven to twelve thirty, eleven to twelve thirty. Um, uh, October twenty-third, I think is the date on that. And as we get closer to October, that October day, depending on the COVID numbers and how folks have signed up for it, um, we may turn it into an all-virtual meeting. And then for the annual conference, which is the weekend, the week in the weekend before Thanksgiving, um, it's currently set to be face-to-face in Bellevue, but we will be deciding in a couple of weeks as, um, the WASD board on whether we go forward with that or whether it becomes virtual. And thank you for allowing me to, um, be here from Shalane. That's the one pandemic perk that I can think has, it isn't, is nice to be able to attend virtually.
We appreciate you taking the time. Stop, Quinn?
I have, um, Kevin? Okay, I have two things. One, um, I, I, I wrote last night about that, but, um, orders of distinction application is due and I just wanna know if you wanna proceed with that. I mean, it's due in two. Never.
I can see you keep it going. Easy for me, is it?
Uh, there, there are the three, um, I thought either the second or the third would be easy to write to. What, what are you thinking, Kevin? I see you're looking at it.
I thought, I was thinking the same thing. I mean, both are good. I mean, we talked about the, the financial stuff tonight and annual budget and how we presented that in multiple ways, you know, so I thought that had a lot of different things that, um, that could play off of it. Um, the decision-making, I mean, with the different meetings and all the stuff we've done in different languages. And so I think we could play out either of those. So I, I don't really have to crack the law.
Okay. Um, the second thing I wanted to talk about is scheduling a, um, study, a special meeting, study session. And I, I don't necessarily want you to get your calendars out now, especially with Jesse not here, but when Andrew and I talked, um, and Leanne and I had coffee last week, or we didn't even have coffee, we had a conversation, um, thought that it's time to get your search consultants on Zoom and, um, start getting specific about the timeline. And since you talked to Selena about maybe being, I'll invite her to come. And then, um, Leanne also suggested that it might be a good idea for us to lay out the, um, how we're gonna what the decisions that we're making about labor when there's only four executives instead of five for nine months. And since the five of us have been doing a lot of planning on how that's gonna happen, just make sure that you know how that's gonna happen and you also have realistic expectations. Right?
Okay.
And then there are a couple of other little things. So, um, Jackson or I, or probably Jackson, will be contacting you in the next day or so to find a date before the middle of September. So, who's as flexible as you can. You didn't share about your new job.
Oh, yes.
Is it good?
Yes, I'm liking it very much. I started working at Super Feet, so. My, it's a company that's very active in our community and puts a lot of, um, a lot of emphasis on volunteering and making the world a better place, so it was a good fit.
I, a couple of years ago, when I went to a chamber meeting, I wanted drawing and it was a tour of Super Feet and a pair of shoes. And I was so impressed with that company. You know, a couple of years ago, they gave every teacher in the district care of insoles for teacher, every employee on teacher appreciation week. But I was very impressed with what I saw in my tour.
Our tour.
Yeah, sorry. But anyway, so those were my two.
Thank you. Jackson will watch for that.
Absolutely, I'll send it to you soon.
Executive Administration, sharing. Share it out. Okay, well, we've reached the end of the agenda for the Octo, uh, October, August thirty-first school board meeting. Our next regular meeting will be held on the last Tuesday of next month, which will be September twenty-eighth. Uh, best wishes to our school staff, students, families for a positive first day of school tomorrow. And thank you for your participation this evening. So I will hereby, I hereby declare this meeting adjourned.